We'll call this meeting of the Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for Monday, April 18th, 2022 to order. And Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Lainer?
Here.
Commissioner Mark?
Here.
Commissioner McCabe?
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Here.
If you will, please let us stand as we salute and pledge to the American flag, and please remain standing for prayer by the county attorney.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we honor you today in prayer and thanksgiving. We pray for our county commissioners and all who represent Craven County, their families and staffs. Grant them peace that passes all understanding and amazing grace to sustain them when days are long and rest is short. Father, you are our refuge and fortress. You provide everything we need for life and godliness. You hear our ardent intercession and smile when we raise our voices in praise and worship. We thank you for your presence, love, and grace. It is in your almighty name we pray. Amen.
Good morning to each of you and welcome to those that are in attendance with us today and to those that also may be viewing online. We welcome you to the Board of Commissioners meeting. This is your meeting, and we thank you for the opportunity to serve you. This morning, as we begin, I'm going to ask if you have your cell phones with you to please make sure that they are on silent or off so they would not disrupt our meeting today. Also, this morning, before we begin, I'd like to, we have all of you are guests, and we appreciate you being here, special guests, but I know we have a group of folks here from Leadership Craven, and I'm going to ask if you are here with Leadership Craven, if you will, please stand. All right? And if you want to, we'll let you introduce yourself for the record.
I'm Abby Delhendrick. I'm a professor there in Nashville, Texas.
Okay.
I'm a department. I'm a financial advisor with other, being a show me of quality engineer knowledge.
I'm a board member.
Thank you all for being here today. We appreciate you. All right. Commissioners, you have your agenda there before you. Are there any items that you desire to pull or add?
Make a motion. We approve the agenda.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passed. All right, the first item of business today is a public hearing for Project Coast, and I'm going to ask if Mr. Jeff Wood, our economic director, will come forward. Good morning, sir.
Morning, Jeff.
pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 158-7.1, Craven County intends to convey for economic development purposes a fee simple interest in a two-and-a-half acre tract of land of, known as 19-4 in the Craven County Industrial Park. The value of the tract is $20,000 an acre for a total of $50,000, and the county intends to convey and sell same as for such value. The county believes the proposed conveyance will stimulate and stabilize the local economy, results in the creation of a substantial number of new permanent jobs in the county, and result in increased tax revenues for the county.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do I have a motion that we open the public?
No move.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Here, none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. All right, we stand in public hearing. Mr. Vice Chair, did we have anyone sign up?
We did not.
Okay. As we always want to do, is there anyone here who failed to sign up for the public hearing that desires to speak to the Board of Commissioners this morning?
Make a motion, go ahead, Pope.
All right, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? Here, none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passed. All right, we're now, any other comments? Mr. Wood?
In my departmental matters later in the agenda, we'll talk a little bit more about this project.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next item is the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, you have the March 28th special call meeting minutes, the April 4th regular session minutes. You have tax releases and refunds. Also, economic development request to set a public hearing on Project Blue Fin, and then the broadband providers memorandum of understanding. Are there any consent agenda items that you desire to pull?
No move, Mr. Urtgen.
We have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion on the motion? Here, none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Lainer?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you. Next item, this morning, we're honored to have Ms. Benita Simmons with us, who will give a presentation about the nonprofit Tried by Fire. Simmons, if you will, come forward, please. And good morning to you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have a presentation that I would like to share with you, but first, I just want to tell you, I've been before you a couple of times, and each time I came, I didn't ask for anything. I just said hello, hello, hello. This time I'm coming and I'm asking for something, but I'll share that with you at the end of the presentation. As you can see...
Say goodbye.
Before I say goodbye. I always told my mother from the year 2000, I believed that someone was going to give our organization a home for the mere purpose of a transitional home for women coming out of prison. I just believed that someone was going to donate us a home. Well, in 2019, someone donated us that home that's on the screen. Not turnkey ready, as you can see, nevertheless, we had the deed. Next slide, please. Again, it was gifted to us, did it to us in 2019. Next slide, please. Well, after we tried to renovate it, and we had several, several volunteers in our community to come and meet us on some Saturdays and during the week, we had to get a comprehensive structure engineer report before we got our building permit. As you can see, we had to demolish the house that was given to us because it was structurally compromised. You also see that there's just clear land because we had to start from the beginning. Next slide. So, we asked a Pamlico County resident, some of you may know him as Mr. Tony Creel, Prado, I'm sorry, to give us a design because we wanted a house to look exactly, if not exactly, but in the same architectural framework as the house that we had to demolish. As you can see, that is our vision. It is the future home of my sister's house. But more importantly, it is the house that the community has built and is building because we're almost finished. We asked last year, 2021, for 1,000 people to donate $100. And just like New Bern, they heard and they gave. Well, we didn't get quite $100,000 from the community, but we did receive $52,000. And on April the 27th, we were the recipient of a $50,000 grant from Anonymous Trust. So, when you do the math, we did receive over $100,000. Next slide. As you can see, we are, at that time, planning, processing, getting ready to get the foundations together. We have Mr. Boswell, Mr. Mickey Boswell and his crew getting ready for the footings. And in that little picture, can't you see, you might can't really make it out, but that's a woman digging, getting ready for those footings. Next slide, please. Our framing is by Tony's Paint and Remodeling LLC. I want to just share with you, they did do work. They just took a little time to smile for the picture. Next slide, please. TCM, as you're going to see after this slide, you can go ahead with the next slide, all of the masonry has been done by TCM. Next slide. This is where we are. But it even gets better, that was then, but if you would just drive by, you'll see that we have all the walls up and things are being divided, and we're very, very happy with our progress. The vision coming to fruition. Next slide, please. And this is because of the community, not just one person, not just two people, but the community as a whole. Next slide, please. This is what people are saying. I always wanted to do something with that property. A couple of the aldermen stated that the tenacity that we've shown, others would have given up in 2016, but they're very proud of our resilience. Lastly, Mr. Matthews stated, I'm thankful that something good is coming out of the home my mother donated. Next slide, please. Not sure what happened there, but Craven Community College is one of our partners, one of our greatest sponsors for an upcoming event that will be taking place on May 14th. Next slide, please. Also Bosch is one of our proud sponsors. Next slide. Chick-fil-A, another proud sponsor. Next slide. Mowing, another proud sponsor. And as you can see, we have several others. So finally, I ask this. Next slide. Are you coming to the Gospel Fest?
I'm into.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Smith. The only thing that we want to leave with you is that we're moving in the neighborhood, and we just wanted to say hello. And every time you hear Tried by Fire, Inc., or every time you hear My Sister's House, we ask you to just show up, that you give us some support, that you let us know that you also care for this wonderful clientele that we'll serve when they come out of prison. Thank you, Commissioners.
If you will, for those viewers that may be listening to us online or will listen to this at a later time, will you please just read off about your Gospel Fest so they can have that contact information?
Yes, sir. Tried by Fire, Inc. presents Gospel Fest 2022, Where Your Past Doesn't Matter, fundraiser for My Sister's House, Craven Community College Campus Lawn, 800 College Court, New Bern, North Carolina, Saturday, May 14th, 2022, at 6:00 PM. Our featured guests will be Dove and Stella Award nominee gospel artist Wes Morgan. For ticket information, you may call 252-637-2339, or you may go to our website, triedbyfireinc.org, and get your tickets. Tickets right now are $25. We have vendor opportunities available, and there will also be featured regional and local artists.
Did you repeat that phone number?
And Ms. Simmons, I know you have folks that are here with you today.
I do.
Ask all those, if you will, to stand?
Yes, part of our board and advisory board.
That's good. Thank you. Appreciate you being here today and your support for this program. All right, Commissioners, we turn it, Vice Chair.
I just have one quick question. That is, when this home is completed, what are you projecting now? Do you have a timeframe?
Yes, it's November. We're looking at the latter part of November right now.
How many women will you be able to accommodate at one time?
According to the ordinance, we'll be able to accommodate 12, but we're starting out with six.
And is there a program, then, obviously, that this gives them a place?
Yes, sir.
To put their head down at night. Is there also a program to work with them on employment, educational opportunities, et cetera? Is that part of your plan?
Vice Chair, I am so thankful that we are partners with Craven Community College. So they'll be a part of workforce. Also, again, you said something key. We're giving them a place to lay their head. So our main program is housing. We are right beside the carts stop where people can come and get, our ladies can get on the van, the carts van, the public transportation, and they can go to various programs that are already being implemented here in Craven County. So the one thing that the ladies need is an address, so then they could qualify for those various programs. So that's our main program.
And the last question I have?
Yes, sir.
You have a quote-unquote "house mother" or someone that's going to be in this house to supervise the situation?
Yes, sir, that is the plan. We have, we're going to have three shifts, and that will be seven to three, three to 11, and 11 to seven, so that we can cover 24 hours.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
Yeah, besides money, would furniture or anything like that be accepted?
I'm glad you asked that. We have, right now, a fundraiser going on, and we have a couple, a wonderful couple. Some of you may know Mr. Rick Barney and his wife. They're fundraising for us, and those persons that want to purchase a room, they can do that through our fundraiser. And so we also have partnered with Target, and they're going to be doing some real nice things for us as well.
So, Mr. Chair, so people can't really, uh, close to the people, right?
Not at this time, just the money and furniture, but they can, they have to go through our chair.
Okay.
Because at this time, we don't have anywhere to store anything.
Any other questions from the Commissioners? The only last thing we say, thank you for being here today and for your vision and for what you're doing. I think you know that this Board of Commissioners has supported the reentry program for years. It actually started with one of our former Commissioners, Scott Dacey and Commissioner Johnny Sampson. And they, they had a vision for this, and this Board of Commissioners, though, have taken it and have invested taxpayer dollars into it, local dollars, and we know that college with their collaboration has also, with state funding, has done it. We very much support that program, and I think you, you work in conjunction with Greg Singleton and that board, and we appreciate what you're doing. Anything else? Again, thank you for being here this morning for your presentation.
Thank you so much. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you. All right, next, we have the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council presentation, Ms. Jennifer Dacey. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Benita.
I think you all probably have, I've got our, our funding for this coming fiscal year before you. It is unchanged from our current year's funding. The only thing that has changed, as you know, we fund a number of programs, and they are described in your packet. Happy to answer any questions you may have about those, but we fund the Area Day Reporting Center here, and then a number of programs that are managed by the Mediation Center of Eastern Carolina, including our Team Court Program, Community Service Restitution Program, a Family Connections Program, and also a program called Girls Empowered, Man Up, that's the, which is a mentoring program. That's the only change we've had really since last year. As you might recall, when I was here this time last year, we were funding a program that Ms. Hazel Royal was behind, and she had some changes in her church and decided not to move forward with that program. So we had to do another request for proposal back in the fall, and, and were able to fund this mentoring program that is also managed by the Mediation Center of Eastern Carolina. So we have those, and then we also have our Vocational Skills Program, really designed to address older youth who are DJJ-involved, and that is at the Volt Center. And so I, I do have with us this morning Jeff Schultz, who is the Director of the Volt Center. We've had some great success stories there. I have one in particular I want him to share with you since we're here today, and we also brought our little handout. We like to share this, just a little show and tell, our, our marketing piece for that program, which has been great. So I'm happy to answer any questions you all have about funding, but everything is, is unchanged, and thankfully, our utilization of our programs is back up following COVID. And we've been very blessed to have Commissioner Smith on JCPC, and she's, she's been a part of many of these conversations and discussions about how things are going. So it's been a different, a different kind of year for our programs, but they're getting back to their normal usage rates.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Dacey, Commissioner Lainer? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Mitchell, I didn't see you.
That, that's okay. Are there any particular programs at the Volt Center that are most favored by young people in juvenile crime prevention?
So, one of the big concerns we had when we were first looking to do a program like this, and I want to say that, just so you all are aware of, it's, it's the only program of its kind in the state, and as a result of that, has received a lot of attention from the Department of Public Safety. There are people at the state level who are trying to figure out how we got so lucky as to make this happen in Craven County. And I think the explanation for that is that we, we have a lot of people who were involved, who, who at the, at the outside of this program were able to figure out what pieces we would need to put together to make it work. So I'll let Jeff speak to a little bit of how it works, but one of the primary needs that we had was we need juveniles to be able to start this program at any time. So no matter what time in the semester, you know, there, there isn't a semester, thankfully, at the Volt Center. So whenever we have a child who kind of needs this kind of programming and is willing and interested in doing so, we get them over there, and they have certain courses they have to take that are more OSHA-oriented before, you know, so that they have workplace safety under their belt, under their belt before they move on to other, to other programs. So that is the really unique thing that we're able to do at the Volt Center, is that if we have a, a young person who's interested in this kind of work, they can get in there right away, and they don't have to sit around and wait, which is not something we want our, our youth doing, if, if, that's part of the reason why they get in trouble in the first place sometimes, as you know. So that's been one of the big benefits to having this availability for our older youth. And of course, we had raised the age several years ago, which means we do have more older youth, and, and there's limited program available, programming available for them. So I'll let Jeff tell you a little bit about our, our greatest success.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. I'm going to tell you a little story about Aiden. And Aiden came through the JCPC program, started off meeting Fridays. We meet every Fridays from 8:00 to about 1:00 in the afternoon, and like Ms. Dacey said, they focus on construction site safety skills in this core curriculum Skill Start program they go through. They learn about how to read blueprints. They learn construction math, probably the most challenging of all those for those individuals. They learn about site safety, how to use power tools, hand tools safely. So Aiden began that track, but while they're there, the instructor, Amber, who is currently teaching that class, shows them other opportunities. We have a lot of construction trades classes. We have diesel classes, welding classes, and they get the hands-on experience to give them some guidance, not only in life coaching, but also employment coaching skills and opportunities. So Aiden drew his attention to, he's a motorhead, let's call it. He likes working with equipment and machines. And he was introduced to Mark, our diesel instructor, and hit it off immediately. As he progressed through the JCPC Skill Start, he had an opportunity to springboard into one of these other classes at the Volt Center, and that was the Diesel Mechanics Program. So he went through six months, being there Monday through Thursdays, eight, eight to about noon, and then Fridays he was there, eight to one. Then after that six months of diesel engines, he went into diesel systems. Now he's focusing more on the electronics, the braking systems of all of any type of diesel engine. Well, I had the fortunate opportunity once to take him on a field trip, all the students. We went up to Gregory Poole. You might have heard Gregory Poole Caterpillar. It's probably one of the largest heavy equipment on the East Coast here. And we took them to Scott Potter, visited him in Little Washington, and they saw the equipment there. Well, again, I want to thank the Commissioners and the City of New Bern all, because these partnerships is what's given these kids this opportunity. Not only do we get the partnership to have that Volt Center there, but now Gregory Poole Caterpillar has donated equipment, engines, a complete engines with electronic control module is on its way to the Volt Center. And opportunities like that, when these kids were there, they saw, wow, I've got a real good job opportunity in front of me. Well, guess what? Aiden is turning 18 years old, and he's going to be starting, they hired him to be going through their education training program in Raleigh. They're going to provide him room and board while he's there, and by the time he's finished and he starts working, he's going to be pushing $40,000 starting salary. So that's incredible for a kid at 18 years old to see what a little bit of workforce training can do for you. You, Ms. Mitchell, you asked too about opportunities there, you know, probably the key classes that the students like to is that diesel program, carpentry, carpentry construction, I guess we'll call it, as well as welding programs. All of these, we have others besides that, but all of these are great springboard opportunities for not a job, but a career for these individuals. I would, I'm going to bet on it, but I would guess that probably in about 30 years, he'll be retired already before 50 years old after this program. And I say that because the opportunities as a diesel technician is not like what you used to think, you know, typical grease monkey working in the garage. When Gregory Poole had come and visited the students in the class, one of the students asked the individual that was there, well, how long have you been with the company? He said, well, I started in 1995. Couple more questions shared back and forth. Well, how much are you making now?
That's a good question.
Guess what? He answered. He says, well, since 2005, I've been making $100,000, and I haven't looked back yet. So he's been making over $100,000 as a diesel technician. He's now, granted, that's not easy work. You know, I put in a lot of overtime, you know, I'm out there, he's mentioned going out to Nutrien, working on heavy equipment there. There were days he's put in 16-hour day shifts. But look what he's able to do with himself from just graduating from high school and doing that. So, great opportunity, but any questions for me about Aiden or anything with the Volt Center?
Any questions? Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted you all to hear that, and I think what's really unique is that we were able to figure out, we have a coordinator who helps coordinate our youth who are coming into this program. She's at the Methodist Home here in town, and, and her ability to interface with these kids and families is what makes this program really work. And I also wanted you all to be aware, Nancy Hodges is here, who's our, our Area Department of Public Safety consultant, and she's, she's basically got everything east of 95, is what I like to say. So she covers a wide area if you have any questions for the state. Thank you.
Commissioner Lainer?
Jennifer, I want to thank you for, you've been doing this for a long time, and you've succeeded well in doing this. But I got a question, a concern.
Sure.
On you always, not always, but you've, money has always been the same for you, is what you get. So I'm wondering, the $42,000 you got down here for the Volt Center for vocational skills, since tuition and everything else is all free, what's this money being used for?
So, yeah, a lot of it is supplies, obviously, because, and, and you know how the college works with that. We have, we have deadlines by which all that money has to be spent. So a lot of it is their actual carpentry supplies and, and things of that nature. And then paying, some of it does go to our coordinator who handles, who handles, you know, figuring out, contacting these kids and families. I mean, some of these kids are actually at the Methodist Home, you know, so they don't have families that are in the area, but she's also coordinating with other families. So there are logistical issues that she's managing. So it's, it's partially that, that cost.
Okay, I'll talk to you offline.
Okay, okay.
Because I know you need money in other areas, so, you know, because they do have, don't get me wrong, a college, college is doing great, you know, you all got money. They open it up for free for tuition and everything else, trying to spread the money around for her. I'll get offline with you.
Any other questions?
Ms. Dacey?
Yes, sir.
You have here that the numbers are lower due to non-qualified staffing, or have you had more luck with qualified staffing?
So I think, I think you're talking about, I'm trying to think, that's probably, okay, yes, that's the Family Connections Program. So that, with that program, that is one that we started several years ago, and it is essentially a counseling type of program. So we have a professional counselor who goes and meets with families in the children's home. And so we've, we are sort of between staff people. We, we've had a staff person for part of the year, and now they're trying to recruit a new one. And as you all know from your dealings with the Health Department, that's not always an easy thing to fill. So we're, we're looking... So, we're looking, that program is currently trying to find a new counselor. So, anybody hearing who's interested, let us know, we'll hook you up. But it's an important program because it fills the gap really between families who, it's designed to fill the need for families who do not have any insurance that would cover mental health or any kind of counseling service and don't qualify for Medicaid.
Okay. All right, any other questions from the board? All right, Board, you have here the recommendation that the board take action today. What's the desire of the board?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the JCPC funding and review recommendation for 2022-23, a funding available of $320,335. Any discussion on the motion? Here none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynam?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Dacey, thank you to all those that came with her today, we appreciate it. All right, next on the agenda, item five is the Act Work Ready Communities Recognition of Craven County, and Mr. George Kramer. Good morning, Mr. Kramer.
Thank you very much, thank you for allowing me to come. I represent the Eastern Carolina Workforce Development Board. I'm the Business Services Rep. My role is to, of course, engage with employers, determine what their needs are and then try to help them as best we can with training, which you've just heard, so we're delighted with that activity. As well, of course, understanding what the employers are looking for in terms of skill. So, in going back to the mid-'90s, the state engaged with the ACT program, which is an assessment profiling activity which was designed primarily for college enrollment. But businesses decided if it worked for college, why can't it work for employment? And with that in mind, they kind of spread their venture and offered it to employers as well. So, the state picked up the program or identified with it, associated with it. The local state educational system picked up the program for the assessments with, through primarily the career and technical education. We're looking at three skill areas which are critical to life. Reading for information, the basic mathematics, and then locating information or, as we would call it, just observation. So, if you can do that, then you can probably be somewhat level of proficient in something. With that in mind, obviously, the schools and employers try to figure out where the people fit in. Schools did the testing, Workforce Development Boards did the profiling, to try to have that match. Three, or four levels, the bronze certificate, if an individual earns that, equivalent to a high school education. So, the employer says, individual has a bronze certificate, he's probably got skills that'll fit in generally anywhere. If he has a silver, he's probably got some skills equivalent to maybe college education. He's got the gold or the platinum, and he's got the skills that we're desiring for promotion and additional opportunities within the organization. So, the state has continued that since 20, excuse me, mid-1990s. In 2013, then ACT and the state engaged in what's called the Work Ready Communities Initiative, which should be a way of acknowledging what the state is doing for the schools. And now with the employers more actively engaged to say, I recommend the program, I support it, I even require it for my employees. And with that in mind, those same four levels determine again how the employee applicant has recognition by the company. Obviously, the companies that have done the profiling are looking for individuals who have the silver or the gold levels because that gives them confidence that those individuals are going to be perhaps the key performers. The state has done this now since 2013. We, Craven County, got recognition in 2015. It's continued that recognition, and this is now the fourth award that we present to you to say, Craven County through its many efforts, the Economic Development Program through the schools, the college, our Chamber of Commerce is, we've got stakeholders are involved in supporting it. And our effort is to engage again with the employer, what do they need, what are they looking for? How can the schools provide it? And of course, qualified candidates for employment and hopefully growth. So, we're delighted to say for Craven County, to date, they've issued 5,475 CRCs or Career Readiness Certification, and the prefix is the national now. And then there are 107 employers who certified the program. So, we're delighted to say it's an ongoing program. Your efforts have supported that and we certainly acknowledge that. This is held by the Economic Development Office here. And then again, we promote that throughout the region and the country. I'd add that the Eastern Carolina region is the first region to be community-ready, all nine counties. And we have that honor almost throughout the country. There are no other countries, states that have that kind of recognition, so. Eastern Carolina's been busy, we will continue to keep busy and try to get employment up. And as Jeff said, we're bringing businesses in, opportunities in. We want to have candidates who will fill those positions and of course, help us grow and prosper. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Kramer?
Other than Mr. Kramer's doing a good job and it sounds like Craven County's doing a good job.
Standing, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate your attendance here this morning and for the information you provided, thank you.
My pleasure. By the way, this is the plaque, so.
All right, great. Thank you. All right, next we will have the Craven Agent Planning Board Budget Revision, Mr. Clayton Gaskin's Chair. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, folks.
Good morning.
You all have this information in your packets, it's much easier for me to explain to you what has occurred. And Commissioner Lynam or Kunchami, and he's part of that board. So, in February of this year, Craven County received an additional $37,293. And at the same time, Kelly with Carts surrendered $25,000 of her current budget. So, a couple of weeks ago when we met as a board, we had $66,022.30. That doesn't include the match on the $37,000 portion to reallocate. So, as a board, we voted, the board, and we're going to, the monies were divided between DSS to use at the George Street Senior Center and also between Havelock. And even after discussing how the monies can be used, we still had $24,592 left of that amount. So, a motion was made and we voted to split that money equally between Havelock and George Street with the hope that they can use the monies for operational expenses. Heather from the AAA, I think at the February meeting, had provided us a list of appropriate uses of the money in operations was one of them. So, for example, the position, part of the money will be used for the salary of the Senior Center Coordinator, which has not been done before, but it is allowed. So, we're trying to think outside the box and keep this money in Craven County without it being surrendered to use elsewhere. So, that's the easiest way to explain what has occurred, and Commissioner Lynam?
I think you did a great job on Clayton, I mean, we got more money, we had more money. What's driven us not being able to spend money and what we had to do with it. You recall, we still had CARES money and family money from CARES that carried over July, August, and September. So, three months, we couldn't use this money because we had to use the CARES money or that was running out. So, that put us in a bind, pushing us out. But with opening it up, to take it into the operational side of the house, which we've never done before, we're able to spend it and keep it within Craven County for us, otherwise it was going to go out to other counties come...
July, or end of June.
In June, yeah, to take it in. But keep in mind also, in August, we're going to be back in here to you again. The state sent out their budget last week, and within two hours, they pulled it back and rescinded it because it wasn't right. So, we still do not have a budget for aging, but we're coming in with the same budget that we used this year for next year, knowing that we're going to get an increase, but we don't know how much because the state hasn't told us. And we're not expecting that for probably for another couple of weeks. If we get it, we'll come in here and do it beforehand, but we're in the same boat. The state is back and forth with us.
It'll probably come the morning I'm here presenting what we had last year. But what Commissioner Lynam was alluding to, Kelly still has some CARES funds over at Carts, so that's why she was able to give back the $25,000.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I have a question. You said that you used the access money to increase an individual's salary, is that not correct? Is that a sustainable?
Not to increase, we used it versus county funds to...
Over, I got you.
Right.
I got you.
We didn't increase, it's just a different operational use.
You just changed the line item. Thank you.
Good question, any other?
Mr., this program pretty much covers Havelock and New Bern, and District One and your district have been out of it for a while now, you know, when they cut it. Is there any chance of that coming back?
I'm not real certain how to answer that. The Senior Companion Program, who is not, well, she's, they get funding for this, but that does cover Craven County. It doesn't include...
Well, mostly for private meals, the frozen meals.
Yeah, the meals on wheels, yeah.
I mean, we all used to have the same thing we had in Havelock and Craven, and it's been discontinued in Vanceboro and...
And the western part. Western part, it's...
And it seems a shame that only a portion of the county is getting any benefit out of that. Okay.
We can bring that up, especially when we got money coming in next year to look at it. The problem is going to be, and we can have an offline discussion with Jason of who we could start that backup with. Now, I know you said Havelock and New Bern, but Havelock covers Harlow, all of Harlow.
Yeah, I know, I realized that, what I was talking about was the outlining county.
We lost a four back in '15 and everything else, but we can, we could have some funding to look at on that, yeah. And we can talk on that, Jason.
Heather had told us this $37,293, we're supposed to get that on the front end of this coming fiscal year, but I don't know that we will.
Nobody has seen it yet.
So, I am scheduled to come back in May to present the new budget, which will be the same as this current year. And if by chance we get that information, we can streamline it in there. I don't know that we will though.
Any other questions, comments? All right, here none. Board, we're asked to approve the HCCBG Revised Fiscal Year '21-22 Budget and approve the budget amendment.
Motion approved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Here no further discussion, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynam?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you, Clayton, appreciate it, buddy.
Ms. Chairman, may I have just a second? Clay, before you walk out, I just want to commend Clay Gaskins. He does this as a volunteer, this isn't part of his job with the county, and he does a great job. And I know this has been a tough process, but he's hung in there and really worked hard with Commissioner Lynam and others to get a resolution. So, thank you, Clay.
Thank you. All right, Departmental Matters, first item we have, Health Department Dental Budget Amendment, Mr. Scott Harrelson.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners.
How are you doing today?
Doing good. This morning, I'd like to bring a budget amendment for the dental program to you. The dental program is school-based and it covers Craven, Jones, and Pamlico Counties. And we actually need Jones and Pamlico County youth to make the program self-sufficient, to have enough Medicaid children to serve. So, it works out really well, there's no county, no state funding in this program. And being school-based, when things closed down for COVID, it was very tough on the program. We went to part-time hours and we just tried to maintain the program. But now that schools are open, the revenues that we've taken in have overshot what we projected. So, it's been really good. There, actually, after almost two-year hiatus of some sorts, we were still operating at the, at the Health Department as best we could. We have a hookup site there. They're seeing levels of decay that they have not seen before. Because it's, you could tell that these children just had not been anywhere else. And I think it kind of reaffirmed while they were there, the good that they do and the impact that they're having. So, we've already amassed about 96% of the projected revenues, and I'm here to ask for another $50,000 budget amendment for the program. And we have a sizable cost settlement, which they'll have a percentage of, probably around the June timeframe. So, it will be another profitable year for the dental unit. And this will just help them maintain operations throughout the rest of the fiscal year.
All right, before we take a motion, is any questions, Commissioner Mitchell?
I ask my first question, do you have enough staff and resources to meet this increased need?
Yes, ma'am, we recently went, we used to have two dental assistants, and we went to two dental assistants and a part-time assistant. We have a dentist who works normally four days a week, she can work five. And we have really one county employee who is the dental coordinator, and she basically lines things up with the schools, she does the billing, she does the patient scheduling, she does a lot of things. So, it's basically one county employee and the rest of the dental staff is contract staff.
Is contract, and will it continue going through the summer?
Yes, ma'am. Usually during the summer, they found that they used to locate at one of the schools during the summer, but they prefer coming back to the Health Department. We seem to get a better business at the Health Department.
Okay, that's awesome.
Other questions? All right, see you none, here none.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this request for $50,000.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $50,000. Any discussion on the motion? Here none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynam?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Harold, we have a new influx of that virus, how has that affected the county?
Yes, sir, the latest numbers from the hospital are that there were two people in Carolina East with COVID. They had had, they had not had their boosters.
That's important.
The BA2, and we have seen an uptick, there was almost no demand for vaccinations until the new booster guidance came out, and we've had an uptick in people coming in to be vaccinated. And the BA2 variant is the variant that seems to be creeping in. And the state epidemiologists tell us that if you've actually had COVID, you have some gained immunity. And of course, the booster shots work well toward it off as well. So, they do anticipate us seeing some rising cases, but nothing like the large spikes that we've seen in the past.
They have a new booster shot recommended for people over 50, those people that are 25, it's not recommended for, is that correct?
Well, the booster shot, the 50 and older is definitely the higher risk, but the booster shot, the, a lot of the 25, 50 never received it anyway, even the first one here. So, it's not a bad ideal at all, and we have those readily available through the Health Department.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, Vice Chair?
Not a question, but just a comment. If, some of you may have seen it, but I was fortunate enough to go visit this dental unit that he was referring to. It's a, it's a, like a tractor trailer trailer that has complete dental office. It is beautiful, it is well-equipped, and I was really impressed with the, with the unit itself and with the people working there. So, just for the people that haven't seen it, which I'm sure most of our viewers and maybe some of the people in the room have not, it's a, it's a really neat deal.
It is.
It's not some half-done deal, it's a, it's a, it's a dental office on wheels and very cool.
Yes, sir. Three operatories, the slide-outs, and it's new. It's only a few years old, so it is state-of-the-art.
Commissioner Smith?
I have two questions, and the first one is, are you having enough traffic to have, to schedule clinics for COVID, or do you just have walk-ins?
We had gotten to the point where we could just accommodate them through our immunization clinics. When we had the uptick occur, we moved it down to one of the conference rooms and then just did a clinic. So we did have to ramp back up and bring it out of just the regular immunization clinics recently.
Well, let me add now.
One question?
It's seamless to the people calling in. They just know they get an appointment.
My question, too, is, how is the pharmacy coming along?
Oh, thank you, ma'am. The pharmacy, we start construction, is it today?
Today.
Yeah, today. Yeah, and the renovations, and we have, pharmacist has been putting together the policies and procedures. She's also went and shadowed some other 340B pharmacies to learn how they operate things, and all of the certifications and licensure have already been put into place as well. So hopefully, as soon as the construction's over and we get our operating system in place, we'll be ready to start dispensing later this year.
Any other questions? As the public sees, there's a lot of moving parts to the Health Department.
Yes, sir.
And so thank you for what you do and to your board. We appreciate you and all of your staff. Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Have a good day. All right, Commissioners, we're going to handle item eight, and then after that, we're going to take about a five, 10-minute recess. Next on the agenda is the Planning Department, the CDBG Neighborhood Renovationalization Grant Program, Mr. Chip Bartlett. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Yes, before you, today we have, Craven County was fortunate once again to get a CDBG NR grant funded for the FY '21 funding cycle. It was a grant award of $750,000 from the North Carolina Department of Commerce Rural Economic Development Division. These funds will be used to perform rehabilitation activities on up to six structures scattered in Craven County. In order to move forward with the activities associated with this grant, funding and remain in compliance, we ask the Board of Commissioners to authorize the chairman to adopt and sign the resolution and policies below. Just note that these policies are, haven't changed. You did have a FY '19 CDBG NR program before this one. The policies are the same as the last go-around, but they do require a new round of adoption. So we have a blanket resolution to include the policies, project budget ordinance, financial management resolution, housing assistance policy, housing construction, contract award policy, citizen participation plan, the residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan, Section 3 or local jobs initiative plan, a temporary relocation policy, code of conduct, fair housing policy, excessive force policy, procurement standards policy, equal opportunity plan, language assistance plan, and finally, the recipients plan to further fair housing. Again, they should sound pretty familiar, as we have pretty much done these with all the CDBG programs that Craven County has been awarded in the last few years. So again, I'd be glad to answer any questions, but otherwise, we just ask for adoption of this resolution so we can move forward with assisting these folks.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Chairman, these grants come directly to us?
Correct. It's a competitive grant application that comes around every year, and it's no local match. So yeah, Craven County has been, again, fortunate for the last two times we've applied to get funded.
And basically, this is an income grant. It, we, many people do not understand, but for middle-income people who had problems during Matthew and Florence, who could receive $30,000 in help to upgrade their home, have not been allowed to do so so far because money does no longer come to the county. It goes to the state government, and the state government hasn't come up with a plan yet, which I think is terrible. We come up with a nice plan here for the people who need help, but we also have these people who are middle-income people who need help, and nothing is being done by the state of North Carolina to help those people. I just had to mention that. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Lainer?
Ms. Chairman, after we approve this, I think you need to thank the board for approving it because each one of these policies requires your signature, so 15 signatures.
The only thing I want to make sure is that you read everything, that I don't sign something that's, 20 years from now, I'll come back and still have them to deal with.
Understood.
All right, any other discussion from the board? Hear none. Madam Clerk, you've heard the motion. I'm not going to go back over it. It's there in your agenda packet. It's a long request of board action, but Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Lainer?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
No.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Bartlett.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Appreciate it. All right, Commissioners, if you will, let's take about a 10-minute break, and we'll come back.
Yeah.
All right, the board will come back to order. Next on the agenda, we have Social Services Budget Amendment, Mr. Jeffrey Merritt. Good morning, sir.
Morning, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. We bring before you a budget amendment to allocate additional funds that we received from the state to one of our energy programs. I believe I was here recently for one of these, Share the Warmth, and there's a new program that we have where funds are being allocated to called Share the Light, and I can be, I can happily give some information about that if you would like. We just got policy here recently, so we're learning about it as well, so.
All right, what's the desire of the board?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $6,353. Any discussion on the motion?
Jeff, this is the third one, right? The third increment that we've gotten, correct?
I think so, yes. And we get these funds, they just kind of trickle in throughout the year, so.
All right, any other discussion, questions? Hear none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Lainer?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, thank you.
Have a good day.
Next, we have Economic Development, Project Coast, Mr. Jeff Wood.
Glad to be back. Again, this was our public hearing earlier today, earlier this morning. The company's name is Crystal Coast Machine. This is a local company. Always enjoy helping a local company expand. Currently, they have about six jobs. Crystal Coast Machine, their primary purpose is to provide services to larger industries in the area such as Moen and Bosch, Electrolux, and they manufacture equipment for the manufacturers. They're looking to go probably at about 25 jobs in the next three years, and their pay is well over our median income at $62,000 a year because there's a lot of engineering that goes into their jobs. So million-dollar investment. They'll start off with about a 5,000-square-foot building, expandable to 10,000 on their two-and-a-half acres that they'll be selling them. Again, the property will be sold at market value. So excited to bring this project for you guys.
All right, any questions?
Ms. Chairman, can I comment just on this one? Jeff and I have really gone back and forth on it because it's such a small lot that we typically wouldn't entertain a two-and-a-half-acre offer in our part, but because of the connectivity they have with partners already there and them being part of the supply chain for our manufacturers, it checks all the boxes other than being more than five acres, really. But I think it's a great company with real growth potential in the future, so.
Any other questions, discussion? Hear none. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution? I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Smith, any discussion on the motion? And that is to approve the resolution to authorize the sale of block 19-4. Hear no further discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have Finance, the Annual Audit Contract, Mr. Craig Warren. Good morning.
Good morning, board. I have one item on the agenda for you this morning, and that is a proposed annual audit contract for the fiscal year 2022. Thompson, Price, Scott, Adams &amp; Company PA has submitted a proposal to perform the county's annual audit for the current fiscal year, ending June 30, 2022. The proposed fee is $72,600, which is the same fee for fiscal year 2021, represents the final third year of the cost proposal that previously was approved by Commissioners. Staff recommends that we continue to contract with Thompson, Price, Scott, Adams &amp; Company PA for the performance of the county's annual audit for fiscal year 22.
All right, any questions for Mr. Warren? Hear no questions. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the audit contract with Thompson, Price, Scott, Adams &amp; Company for fiscal year 2022. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Lainer?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Craig. Commissioners, next, we have appointments. We have pending, current, and upcoming appointments. You see there, the pending appointments, please take note of them or the any nominations.
I would.
Okay, they're just talking about pending at the present time. Hear none for pending, we'll go to current. The first one, the current, is JCPC. We have the applicant Wendy Phillips-Peden, and her application is in your agenda packet who seeks appointment to fill the DSS seat. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Peden.
All right, we have a nomination for Ms. Peden. Are there other nominations from the board? Hear none, she will be accepted by acclamation. Next, we have the Voluntary Agriculture District Advisory Board. You have Mr. Wyatt Whitford from District One, David Parker from District Two, Glenn Ipek from District Two, and Carl Turner from District Five.
Chairman, I recommend Wyatt Whitford from District One.
All right, we have a nomination for Mr. Wyatt Whitford for District One. I'd like to ask that Mr. David Parker, Mr. Glenn Ipek from District Two be nominated. Do we have other nominations? I will also make nomination for Mr. Carl Turner in District Five. Are there any others from the board? Hear none, we accept those four by acclamation. Next will be the Craven County Board of Adjustments. You have a vacancy there. Is there any? Yes, sir.
So Mr. Brazelton passed away. He maintained one of the seats on the Board of Adjustment for the area outside of Cherry Point, so we continue to work with Commissioner Lainer and Commissioner McCabe to try to identify what staff plans on doing, is providing a list of addresses and individuals in that zoning area so that can be appointed for you to take a look at.
Okay. If we might, then let's move that one to pending for the next commissioner meetings until they have adequate time to do that. Thank you. And then you have the next, the Board of Equalization and Review. I think we need to hold on this one also until we approve the bylaws, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, we'll defer consideration. All right, are there any other current appointments by Commissioners that we've forgotten? Hear none. You see there, the upcoming appointments, please take note of those.
Now, the upcoming appointments, Joe Fogleman, will that come under the new ruling also?
If you approve it, yes, sir.
So we should let that go for the new rule?
Yes.
All right, next, we have the County Attorney's Report, Mr. Eric Grady. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I have two items for the board's consideration this morning. The first item is an initial offer on county-owned property obtained through the tax foreclosure process. The address is 107 Blueberry Lane with a parcel number of 5-014-216. The offer is in the amount of $2,430. The original past due taxes and cost of foreclosure together were $1,508.33, and the tax value of the property is $2,430. As the board is familiar, if you accept this offer, we'll put it out for the upset bid process and then bring it back to the board when that process is concluded. I do recommend to the board that you give initial approval to this.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution approving the transaction and authorizing upset bid process for parcel number 5-014-216. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. All right, B.
My second item this morning is the initial draft of the updated rules of procedure for the board. Nann distributed those to the board, I believe, last week. I have a red-line copy this morning, as does the board, exactly what y'all received. I can proceed. However, you direct this morning, I'm prepared to give a brief summary of the primary changes, and I'm certainly glad to field questions. We can bring another draft back to the board at a later date. If the thing is close to being ready for approval, certainly the board can act on it when you're ready. So, Mr. Chairman, how would you like for me to proceed?
All right, Commissioners, do you want to go ahead, and let's take this up today and begin discussions on it? Is that a consensus? Hear no objection, so proceed.
Okay. I'll hit the highlights. There are basically three categories of changes. One, I would call formatting type of changes that I will not focus on today. The rules have been amended numerous times over the years, so we made an effort to get all the formatting, all the numbering, all the margins on the same platform. I made the document a little busier than I would have preferred, but it'll clean it up going forward. The second category of changes are areas in which our practice does not match the requirement of the rule. We have, you know, changed what we've done over the years, and I have conformed the rules to meet with our current practices. And then the third category are what I would call the changes of substance. There are just a handful. The board has talked about those previously, and I'll highlight those in the review. But we start on page one, Rule One. I've added a reference that we will inform to state law in any case in which the rules conflict with state law. The thought is, we wholesale inherit the requirements of state law in several points throughout the rules, and if the state statute is updated, we want to make sure that we're in conformance with the state statute, and this would fix any issues along those lines. The next change is a good example of that. Page three, we added an item 10 to the permissible grounds for closed session. This is in addition for some of the law enforcement legislation that's been approved in recent years. We didn't have that in our rules, so I went ahead and added it, but if we have that situation in the future and do not update our rules, we can still proceed under the state statute. Item C, closed session attendees, this is the first item of substance we've added at the end of C. Two items, that closed sessions may only be attended in person, and that all electronic devices capable of recording discussions will be deactivated during a closed session. As the board is aware, there were some cases in the western part of the state with, if you can believe it or not, folks impersonating elected officials and participating remotely in meetings and closed sessions. We've never even conceived of that being an issue here, but we'll go ahead and address it as the board directed. Rule Four is a substantive change, really the second one. We're changing the meeting time to 6:00 PM for the evening meeting. That seemed to be the consensus of the board with discussions on this point over the past several months. And down in the body of Rule 4A, we've changed the rule to meet with our practice. There was, during the organizational meeting, was a requirement that the commissioner, with the most votes in the most recent election, preside over the election of chair and vice chair. Clearly, we haven't done that over the years, and we just let the. Clearly, we haven't done that over the years, and we just let the current chair preside, so that's an instance where we are conforming the rule to our practice. Page five, the sunshine list provision. Basically, NAN has been in the very good practice of providing notices of all meetings to folks on the sunshine list in addition to copies of the agenda. Those items are not required by statute, but certainly are good practice, so we wanted to memorialize those in the rules. We're all big fans of transparency, so we wanted the rules to reflect our efforts on that. Down in item F, same page, and again, we're dealing with the conduct of meetings. Item four, if there is a remote meeting or a commissioner participating remotely, we want a roll call vote on each vote. That's really the only way we can be clear on both ends of the line who is voting how. If everybody just says aye or nay simultaneously, it's hard for the clerk to record how each individual member's voting. Continuing on page six, again, the conduct of meetings, items G and H. We incorporate the new state of emergency remote meeting legislation that was passed early in the COVID epidemic that fortunately we have not had to use extensively, but it is there if need be. And then we also, in H, confirm that there's no voting by proxy. Page eight, right at the top in item B, it's the agenda packet delivery. We have contemplated delivering the agenda packet to the commissioners electronically based on the action the board took earlier with iPads and connectivity, so that is a possibility. Down in the consent agenda, we've increased the budget amendment amounts to 15,000 from 5,000. The board, I believe, arrived at that conclusion several meetings ago. Item 10, well, I'm sorry, page 10, and we've got a new G on public comments. And as the board will recall, several years ago, we revamped the public comment methodology significantly, and then in turn, during the emergency legislation pertaining to remote meetings, early in the COVID pandemic, there are some state statute provisions that require sharing written comments for public hearings that are held in a remote meetings, and that's a new wrinkle in state law. And as we, again, talked about transparency in our historical practice, we basically incorporated a provision that said, as the clerk, the management team receive comments that are directed to the Board of County Commissioners that pertain to a public hearing or an agenda item, we want to be clear that those comments get relayed to the board, which has absolutely been our practice historically, but we wanted to, again, memorialize that transparency concept, as I like to call it. Let's see. Over on page 15, Rule 31, dealing with appointments, and this is another change of significance and substance, and the board's already recognized this issue in the appointments earlier. We are changing the term limit, if you will, from 10 to 12 years. The 12 is, and I hesitate to say this, since I obtained all my education in Chapel Hill, but it's a function of math. All of the terms that we appoint to, basically, can be divided into 12, so we won't artificially cut off an existing term, which the 10-year limit certainly did. So, going forward, the term limit will coincide with the end of an appointment term, whether it's one year, two years, three years, or four years. So, that'll be a nice, neat break and probably make NAN's life a little bit easier when we're looking at the maximum time that individuals can serve.
Can I make a motion or statement that each one of the committees that we do appoint understand that fact? In the past, they have not. I mean, there's been situations where a person has been on there for more than the 10 years, and nothing's been... You know, there's an excuse if there's nobody to replace the person, but in many cases, it should be the boards, not the commissioners, who replaces that person. I mean, we're saying that it has to be replaced, but the board should be aware that it's their responsibility to replace it.
I don't follow what you're saying.
I don't either, the board.
Because this board of commissioners...
Well, let's...
No, 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 let me say this. It's this board of commissioners, every citizen serves at the pleasure of the board of commissioners.
I agree.
This board appoints those...
I agree.
I mean, I don't understand what you're saying.
It happened on a board that you and I served, and I've served on, where the person did not realize that at the end of 10 years, he had to get off. So, it would seem to me each board should know that, besides the commissioners knowing it as a board, or 12 years, whatever the figure be.
Okay.
And I'm sure we can address that administratively, perhaps by distributing the revised requirement, if enacted by the board, or making folks aware of it as they submit applications.
The only reason I brought it up is because it affected me, and the person was pretty upset with me.
Understood.
You were just talking about that every board should have knowledge that...
That's right. Every board should have knowledge that it's 12 years.
But also, boards should also have the knowledge to recognize that we don't have to let it go to 12 years either, you know? I mean, if...
If there's an extension, yes.
Well, I'm just saying, if somebody has served two terms, and they don't have in but nine years, maybe, and this board feels like they're... I mean, it may not be this board, it may be a future board, but the board of commissioners feel that there needs to be someone else serving in that capacity.
Well, the board can remove it any time, yes.
I think it goes both ways. There needs to be understanding. We appreciate people serving, but these are not lifetime appointments.
Yeah, I just want to bring that up for understanding.
I think the requirement existed in previous years or decades, but it wasn't really enforced. And I think what we're really saying is that we want to be clear that they serve the needs of the board and the county, and that we do mean the term limits this time.
Very well put. Okay, thank you.
And that change is really the last change of significance. I'm glad to answer more questions for the board. If there is any direction on other changes that have not been made, or that changes that are in here are not exactly what the board would like, it's basically however the board wants to proceed.
Okay, questions for the county attorney?
Yes, sir, I'd like to make a motion that we approve these revised procedures.
All right, we have a motion to approve the revisions, to make the revisions. Do you have a second?
I would make a second, but I would just want to make a statement first. On page 19, a request for nonprofit organizations, and it goes down. These people that come to us to give us, who want money, normally, the county has taken the position, if it's a board that is helping the county, let's take the women's shelter, where they're taking the women in, and that's something that relieves the county of having to put money up for, except through them. But that they must show a budget. I mean, in the past, we've had let companies go that have not shown us a budget first, and I believe we're supposed to get a budget on every one of these things.
Right, so you got... This contemplates a little different process. This would be outside of the budget process here. What the budget process does requires is an application that's handled through my office, which requires board roster, budget, audit, litany of things. This would be, for instance, today, Gene was representing a nonprofit about some issue, and he came and said, "I need $200 for a party." Gene would need to bring his chairman, if he's the executive director, to the meeting. Then you could make that request of them as the information you need to make a decision.
Well, what I'm doing...
Now, we can add that here.
I'm going in the budget time, and it happened last year where people came in for requests and asked for money, and we didn't have a copy of their budget.
Well, it's because, it wasn't because they weren't asked to provide one, so that's where the board has to make a decision. Are you willing to fund it without a budget?
I don't... Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. I don't think that we should accept any person who does not have a budget for us if they're asking us for money, because after all, we're spending the contingent, contingents that we serve, and it's not right.
Mr. Grady, would you think this policy does not address how someone would request money through the budget? This would be how they would request it outside the budget at a commissioner meeting, is that correct?
That's correct, and I would... You know, you could go two ways on this. You could certainly include those requirements in your actual rules. You could also ask your staff to come up with a formal policy or to revise an existing policy and adopt it that way. The thing about putting it in the rules, if something needs to be tweaked, you're revising the rules again. If it's an administrative policy, you know, staff can implement it, or just that policy can be brought back to the board. So, we could go either way. I would probably prefer a separate policy. I think it's a little bit easier to tweak as needed, but we can, again...
I'm not arguing about the policy in here, but I think that the board should have a policy when people come in here asking us for money, that it's an area where the board should get involved, and also that they should have a copy of that budget.
Can we not? If someone comes in and asks for money and doesn't give us a budget, we can just look them in the eye and say, "Sorry, we're not going to approve that."
Well, yeah, I agree with you 100%.
All we got to do.
That's... I mean, so, being the custodian of the budget by statute, to put something in front of you, I require a certain amount of information, because I know that's what you require to make that decision. If someone's not compliant with my request, your policy is not to fund that in the budget. That's it. I don't think you have to write that down. I mean, I'm clear to them, if you don't provide a budget, this will not go well with the commissioners in May. I say that every year.
I understand that, but we had something happen last year where it did.
Again, I hear what you're saying, Tom, but again, it happened because this board allowed it to happen. Just because we put it in writing doesn't hold us responsible for it. If this board decides to go against it, it only takes four of us to say, "Hey, we're going to do it." So, I understand. I mean, I like what Jack said. I mean, it's by law, he's required to do it, but it's not by law for us if we want to approve it or disapprove it. I mean, I understand where you're coming from, from this perspective for this, but from your looking at a different one, I think we got to follow what Jack is doing already.
There are some times where we try to get as far down the road in the budget process as we can, and individuals know that that issue's going to come to you. So, I think the more firm you are with those type of requirements of budget, the stronger a message it sends back to them that says, "Hey, if you don't show up with your full package, you're not going to get funded."
All right. Anything else, Commissioner Mark?
I have a question.
Commissioner Smith?
If a person comes and wants funds, is it feasible to send them back to do a budget unless they have the budget first time?
Commissioner Smith, I will tell you, by the time I get it at budget time, if they haven't already completed a budget, I usually tell them they're way behind, and there's probably a high likelihood they won't be able to catch up for this funding cycle.
One additional question, then. Then, when a person comes to you, and you know they're going to be asking for funds, do you tell them at that time that they should present a budget to the commissioners?
Well, I do. There are oftentimes people send in requests unsolicited, meaning we didn't have any communication prior to them coming in. And in my role in this, isn't to say whether it's a valid request or not, it's to make sure that you have enough information to consider, because in your budget, one of the few things I don't recommend financially to you is special appropriations, which these fall under, because that's completely the board's prerogative, which you invest in. But I'm not going to allow someone that would have... I wouldn't be able to judge it whether it's a good request or a bad request if you asked me. So, that's why I need that information to kind of get there. I'm kind of your first vet. I'm vetting it before it gets there to make sure it has all the required information.
I understand. I don't want to prolong this so much, but however, if I am requesting funds for a project, you know, like one item or two items, and I list those, do I need to go further in identifying a budget?
You would have to have... Yes, ma'am, you would have to have... I don't want to see the project budget, I want to see the budget of your organization to make sure you can sustain that project long-term.
The whole budget, not just the part...
Right. So, Gene's nonprofit comes in and says he wants a $200 ice cream stand to give out ice cream. I got to make sure that if we help fund that ice cream stand, that Gene can continue to buy ice cream over the years, so that's why I need to see his budget to make sure it's there.
Got you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think the thing that, what I was trying to point out is, let's take RCS. If we didn't fund RCS, we would have had to take on what RCS does, the county would have, as far as the poor people, serving them, and so forth. It's bringing people here that come in for funds that have nothing to do with the county having to act, if I make myself clear. See, RCS is, if we didn't take on and fund RCS, we would have to take on a lot of what RCS does. But I've seen stuff come in here, people asking for money, that we shouldn't even be giving money to.
Well, we have the option of saying no, then.
That's right.
They can come in, but we don't have to agree with them.
But a lot of times, we have, and that's the point I was trying to make.
Right, and, Mr. Chair, I'm just going to be real simple. If you ask for money from the county, you better present a budget.
Right.
Or my vote's going to be no.
Send them a budget.
All right, Commissioner Lanner, I saw your hand go up earlier, did you have...
Sir, if we approve this, does this go into effect at our next meeting for the 6 o'clock meeting?
Well, that is something we need to...
I have a recommendation for you on that.
Let's go ahead and address that.
My recommendation, make this effective July 1st, because you've got some real key points, like the budget presentations from the schools, and then you have your budget public hearing. To not confuse anybody with those two critical things, starting July 1st gives you... You've cleared out all that stuff.
Great idea. Okay. Other questions? I've got several things here. All right. If you will, I think it's just grammatical, and maybe I'm just not understanding it. Go to page 10 of the policy, F, Enforcement of Policy. And under Enforcement of Policy of F, it says the, and you marked out board's chair, "The/or vice chair in the chair's absence shall enforce this policy during the course of any particular comment period." Should that say the chair or vice chair?
Yes, sir, and that's one of the things, assuming the board approves this policy, when we incorporate the red lines, we'll vet it several more times to make sure things like that are...
All right. I'll point that one out. Then go to page 17. Under Selection Process 2, look at B. And we've marked out board.
Yep.
The board and the board, so that's going to be, that whole B would be taken out, correct?
It should not actually be taken out, it should stay in there.
So, what's going to stay in, the whole thing?
I honestly don't know how that was taken out. It looks like a mistake on my end, so I think B will stay in there.
B will stay in. I reckon the only thing that would be taken out, I think you had started just inserting the clerk and not the clerk of the board, is that... Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So maybe just at the end, the Board, the rest would stay in?
Yes, sir.
All right, go to C, right under that. Nominations for Vacancies Made/Be Made.
Yep.
And that's just a grammatical? Is that supposed to be may?
May/Be Made, yes, sir.
May/Be Made, okay. That was the only thing that I, and there may be something else, but I, I noticed. Okay. All right, so those will be corrected. Any more questions before we enter? Well, we have a motion and we have a second, but I think the motion needs to be reflected in the individual who, the commissioner who made the motion and the one who seconded it. If it could reflect that they will not take effect till July 1, 2022. Commissioner Mitchell, did you make that motion?
Yes, and I'd like to amend that motion to reflect that date.
Okay, and I don't remember who seconded it.
I'm the second.
Okay, Commissioner Martin, he said he'd make that. Are you okay with direction of the Board, what we have?
Yes, sir, assuming there's an affirmative vote. A next step will be to incorporate these changes, clean up the formatting items, and we'll redistribute to the Board with an effective date of July 1. But I wanna make sure y'all get it in, in advance. So if there are any final tweaks that need to be made, we've got time during the budget process to do that.
All right, any other comments, questions, discussion?
And the 6 o'clock will take care of, in the July meeting.
Yes, sir. The first July meeting will be 6:00 PM.
Okay. Here no further discussion on the motion, and the motion is to make the necessary changes that have been outlined. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Lainer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lainer?
Yes.
Commissioner McCain?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Judge?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you for the work you and staff put towards that. County Manager's report, Mr. Vay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity. I feverishly wrote some notes when I saw an audience of folks who were here to watch us this morning. They've all left, so you, you'll, I, I won't say too much like I would, but I think if you look at today's agenda, I get a question all the time, "What's the difference in city and county government?" Our agenda today is a county government agenda. And it shows where we're an arm of state government. You talk about workforce, you talk about healthcare, you talk about social services, you talk about all those programs, juvenile crime prevention, reentry, the things that the county's invested in. And a lot of times, you know, people neglect the fact of what, what a county really does. And I'll tell you that counties are instrumental in providing services at the local level. Cities exist because people want them to. Counties exist because we provide essential services, so I'll leave with that. Last week, had a great opportunity with Vice Chairman Booker to attend a reentry council celebration for April being the month of reentry. It was also with a sad note that our reentry director, Greg Singleton, will be leaving Craven County to take another position in the central part of the state. Greg has been instrumental in taking the reentry council and program to the next level, and that's what we have. And I saw some things this morning that are a direct reflection of Greg's hard work over the years. And I was reviewing some pictures with Gene last week. We were looking at some things on his computer as he was transitioning models, and we looked at, it was a town hall meeting at Riverbend back in 2016. It was one of the first times Greg came with the county, presented the reentry program to the public. And I, I hearken back of where we started and where we've gotten. And Greg deserves a lot of credit for his hard work, and we're really gonna miss him, so I'll leave him.
Can I stop you right there? Board, I know that there are many folks that do a lot of great work for Craven County, and, and everybody should be recognized. But I think we've had a great working relationship with Mr. Singleton and, and what he's done. It's been a, it was a gold that was, as we've already said, that started here, a seed planted. With the Board being in agreement of asking the County Manager to draft a letter acknowledging his service here in Craven County and thanking him.
Yes, sir.
Could I have a motion?
I approve.
Second.
All right, we got a motion from Commissioner Smith, a second from Commissioner Mitchell. We need discussion on the motion. If you're in all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed, all right?
I'll end my comments about Mr. Singleton, the reentry council. I hope I'm not sealing Commissioner Booker's thunder, but there were two gentlemen that spoke at the lunch. Both of them are success stories out of the reentry council. Both of them are employed now. Both of them had a long history of being incarcerated, not only in Craven County, but in other places they've lived throughout their life. It was a very moving experience, it was very meaningful, and the work that's done, putting people back to productivity in their life, is just exceptional. So I'll, I wish the whole Board could've heard those two comments. I am gonna show, and I, I hope most of the Commissioners, we do have a local celebrity in the room with us today, the winner edition of the County Quarterly. As a, I don't know where the camera is, if I can get, somebody can move it, but Commissioner Lainer is included, I see, as the person who found the Albert Coates statue in the last fall edition, so. They, they wrote a very nice write-up on Commissioner Lainer, and it was great to see him being recognized there.
I'll sign my name later.
I will. I got a Sharpie ready for that. Commissioner Mitchell?
You don't have an autograph signature.
I want a picture.
I'm gonna get the picture blowed up as a poster in my office. For the folks who are tracking the Keener Avenue project, I spoke with Commissioner Mark last week. This is the trailer park in District 1. It has been paved, it is finished, the drainage work was also completed. I actually went out there with staff a couple weeks ago and rode down the, rode down the new road, and it was in great shape, looked great, came in right at budget. And we're gonna close that door and begin trying to collect the money from the owner based on the judge's last order. I wanted to update the Board on that. Lastly, and every so often I'll, I'll highlight a few things in the memo, which you got last week. We've tried to make some recent changes to give you more comprehensive dive into the different functions of county government. Lauren, in my office, is doing a great job helping department heads start to tell their story a little bit better versus just giving you data in a raw form, trying to put the narrative with it. I wanna point out a couple things. If you look at the Planning and Inspections Report when you have a moment, what Chad and Don have done is outlined every grant program that we have, told you what addresses are attached to it and what that program does. And it, it surprised me how much is out there. Seeing it on one sheet of paper really opened my eyes to the work that's being done by our planning department. I mean, it's, it's probably over 100 homes, sites, generators, water and sewer. I mean, it's actually three pages of listing of different things. But also, one of the things I liked the most was it went through our Stream Debris Removal Program, which is really one of the shining stars, I think, of, of our staff and how they've taken that program, made it a model across the state. But the, the amount of miles of stream, 106 miles we cover, we do beaver management along the way, we use grant money, we try to maximize the resources that are there. We're continuing to try to work with the programs to make sure they align well with how the work needs to be done. That's a work in progress. But I thought that was a, a really good synopsis of what our planning department's up to. The second one was the new Veterans Report. And I have to kinda flip through the book here a little bit. But what, what's oftentimes happens, Jeff was giving you a lot of graphs, ups and downs of how many people he saw, but you weren't learning what exactly he was doing for those veterans. We know we have a Veterans Office, we know we help them get additional benefits or benefits that they deserve, but we don't know really how far Jeff goes. And there was a couple examples he used in his report. And one of them, I'll just read to you. It was a Vietnam Veterans Claim that the Office started back in 2019, was recently awarded retroactive benefits. "We have had to do extensive research to obtain the proper documentation to prove Vietnam service. The VA had denied numerous claims, and we have had to appeal the decisions and argue the case before the Board of Veteran Appeals. The VA has now granted benefits and a retroactive payment sent to the veteran for over $53,000. The veteran will also receive a monthly award of $3,500. We are grateful that the veteran is now receiving the benefits he deserves." That statement's the whole reason I think this Board's invested there, and what a great program. So I just encourage you to take a look. If you, if you see anything that you want tweaked or you don't like, let me know. If not, we'll keep, keep it coming. Yes, sir.
Going back to the Planning Department, what really impressed me as I went through that was how many projects, how many different things that department manages and is involved in. You know, I, we hear one piece here, one piece here, but when you look at that, man, they, they've got a bunch of stuff that they're managing. But I think the city's inspections department, much different. All they do is go out and inspect, that's what they do. Our department does, like you said, the difference between city and county management, and that, that's just one piece of it, is dramatic.
Absolutely. And I think oftentimes, we keep pushing stuff to planning inspections because they're so good at it, and you don't realize the quantity they have. But I did, Commissioner Martin went down a path earlier, I think it's important. This list probably wouldn't be so big had we gotten the money when we were supposed to. We're still working projects from a storm that happened in 2016 because they couldn't get the money out of Raleigh down to local level. So we're continuing to work on that and advocate for it. It appears it's all gonna come to a head about the same time with the Florence stuff, so.
All right, questions for the County Manager?
Hold on, he took my thunder away from me because I was gonna hammer him on this thing. This, and, and it's been a long weekend, and I understand that, but everybody needs to take a look at this and everything, especially for those that are going out and has opposition for elections this year. This has got the most important information that we've had in a long time, Jac, for everything that this county has done in the past couple of years. I mean, I commend the staff and Jac for this, this work in here. I mean, the amount of information that's in here is unbelievable. And all you need is this when you're having your town hall or a debate with your people because this is it right here. This, this is, this is the Bible now for what's been going on in this county, doing it and everything else. So I commend you and your staff, Jac, it's a, it's a good piece of work.
I sign it. I got a lot of folks in, in the office, particularly Lauren, that's taking this on as a, as a project.
Mr. Chairman, you know, many of us talk about how, how this county has kept the taxes low, but we haven't talked about the additional services that we have provided in keeping those taxes low. And we have, we really should make a list of those services that we have provided. There's quite a few.
Well, I think if you look at this, it shows that all the departments, it's a cultural thing, and it happened long before here, that we've always tried to be the best, but maximize the resources that are available to us. And I think if you keep that margin, you toe that a lot long enough, it gets embedded in the organization, and that's, that's where we're at now.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you, sir, appreciate the time.
Appreciate it. All right, next we have Commissioners' report. We'll start with Commissioner Mark.
Commissioner Mark has nothing to report except Happy Easter to everybody.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner McCain?
Yes, I'd just like to say, I had a wonderful, blessed Easter weekend with my children. And also I would thank the system manager, the county manager, and my colleagues here for approving the funds to do the Community Center in Harlow. The job, the job was well done, and they finished this past Thursday. And they did an awesome job. And I went to church yesterday, and I got, made a report on it. And I kinda got a standing ovation from my church members of the church, so I was glad for that. And I do know that people do, do appreciate it. Some might not say anything about it, but most of all, most of the people will appreciate what I've done, what we had done for the Harlow Community Center. It smells good, it looks good, and walks good. If you get a chance, County Manager, one day you get a chance, go down there and look at it. I know you've seen pictures of it, and I took a lot of pictures of it also. So the contract did a wonderful, wonderful job. And still, I say again, I wanna thank Gene and County Manager and my colleagues here that approved that one for me. I really appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Nothing today.
All right, Commissioner Lainer?
Yes, sir. At the last meeting, I talked to you about DICS. I have my DICS meeting on Wednesday. Things have changed a little bit. They're getting away from a 23-hour chair because they know that the money is not coming in. So they're now gonna go, they're gonna try to take that money that was gotten and use it for a 12-hour chair. And some of us are still trying to fight that because we think it's, it's just a waste of $1.5 million to have a 12-hour chair and everything out there. But I represent this Board, so I, I want your feeling. I'm one of the ones that's voicing my opinion that keep the money.
Could we get a three, a three-hour chair for nothing?
Right now, they're saying it's not gonna pay nothing, but we're gonna pay eventually sometime down the road because this $1.5 million that Lazard got is, is only good for two years. So, and I don't, I don't think a 12-hour chair is worth $1.5 million. I don't care how many chairs they have in there that's gonna do it and everything else, but I represent you, the Board.
The reaction I'm seeing from Commissioners' faces and nods, I, I think, you know, just like they said last time, Commissioner Lainer, there's a better way to utilize taxpayers' dollars. So I think you've got the consensus of this Board to continue on track like you're going.
Next thing, I wanna, I wanna comment on one of our departments, and, and that's carts. In this report, if you looked at this report and everything else, over the last 18 months, two years, we've done a lot in carts. We've, we've, we've asked carts to do a lot, we've stepped up. They've got new routes, they've got new buses, they've got new signs. This is the highest number that I've seen for that, for that loop being driven last month of over 1,000 people riding that bus. And I say that because last Tuesday, carts got bashed by a municipality here.
They got what?
Bashed.
Oh.
They got tore up because.
Criticized.
Criticized, that, real bad on it and everything else. But we're, I, I believe that we're doing exactly what the people ask us on our surveys. I think they're doing exactly what this Board has asked them to do. Is it probably exactly 100% what we want? No. But we're, they're doing what we're asking them to do. And for them to take that criticism, and we're having enough problems getting drivers and people to work for the salaries that we're paying, to take the comments that we're getting. So I just wanna put it out there to Gene, to your staff, and your people out there. They're doing, from my perspective, they're doing what we're asking them to do, and they're doing a good job. Otherwise, we wouldn't have over 1,000 people riding that thing last month.
Yeah, and just to add to that, a good part of that has been done in the city of New Bern.
It all has.
That's what I meant.
Yeah.
Good part of it.
So I just wanna, I mean, you know, on carts, I think they're doing great. I think the Board should recognize them, they're doing what we're asked to do. We've got it going. They're continuing to try to improve it and make it better, and I think we're way beyond what we were. And Mr. Chair, I'll shut up.
Thank you. Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of things. I attended a Board meeting for the New Bern Library last week, and the Board continues to be very concerned over the lack of a more central library, a larger library with, that's more accessible and more parking that is available. And once again, I explained budget constraints, but I also suggested to them that it would be helpful to the Board to understand the depth of the citizens' concerns, and I recommended that they collect signatures for a petition to show that it is not just the Board, but it is the people that they interact with on a daily basis, that that would show the degree of concern in the community, or not with it. So hopefully, we will see something that comes out of that one. And the other thing is, many of you know I campaigned door-to-door, and I am probably seeing a 25% to 30% turnover in households. I'm astonished at the number of new people who have moved into this community. So I would say to the Board and also to our citizens, if you don't know somebody, reach out your hand. You hear about turnover, you hear about the number of people moving here. I'm seeing it, it is incredible. We have a lot of new citizens, and we need to make them welcome. them welcome.
You know, the second, to second that, when I ran the first time and I banged on doors, people that voted for me said, the reason I voted for you is because you banged on my door.
Well, there's an astonishing, and they're all ages, okay? It's not just retirees, it's young professional couples. It's, it's amazing. The good news is we have been discovered as a great place to live, and the bad news is we have been discovered as a great place to live. So put your hand out, please, everybody. And other than that, happy Easter.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Chair? Yeah, just to add to what the county manager said about the meeting that we attended last week, my approach when I saw Greg Singleton was, I'm not speaking to you. I'm not speaking to you. You're leaving us, you're abandoning us. I have nothing to say to you. And of course, as, at the end of the meeting, I, I gave him a hug and thanked him for what he's done. But the point I wanted to make was that I, I made a, a strong point to raise stats, that we make sure that we get somebody in his place who's capable and do it quickly. And of course, his response, well, we have to go through the process. I understand that. But what this program does is critical. This reentry program, people coming out of prison have to have a lifeline, or they're going to go right back again. They're going to, they're going to commit a crime that's going to affect some of us or some of our constituents. We've got to keep this program going. And it, it was impressive to hear what these, these two young men that spoke, what they said. So they, they, they said, they were so appreciative that they had somebody helping them. One of them was homeless. When he came out, he had no home, he had no place to live, and they found him a place to live and then got him into a program and got, he's got a good job now. So very, very positive program, and we want to make sure we keep that alive. That's it. All right. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. One just item announcement that I have, on April the 28th at 6:30, I'm going to have a town hall meeting at the Coast City Fire Department. It is not this coming Thursday, but Thursday week, April 28, 6:30. And I've invited a, a number of guests to be there to take questions, to address our constituents. We've invited the rest of our Deeds, Ms. Sherry Richards, our district attorney, Scott Thomas, Representative Tyson, Representative Kidwell, and Senator Norman Sanderson. They've all committed that they will be there. We also have a number of folks from county government that will be there. Ms. Leslie Young, our tax administrator, Jasmine Kennedy, who is our educational coordinator for our opioids awareness. She's going to be there. And we may have some more that come. And just kind of give an update to our citizens and what's going on. This is not a political rally or any kind of event like that. I know we will have probably candidates that will show up, and we will definitely recognize. All those that are on the platform, on there, they've been identified, number one, because they do not have opposition in this upcoming election, or they're not running in this county, in this election. We have some folks that names were not called out, that we'd love to have, be a part of the discussion, but we did not want to make it a political event. And so April 28, 6:30, I know all the Commissioners are busy, but if you are able to come by, we would love to have you to be a part of that. We also will have, Craven County Farm Bureau is going to sponsor just a light meal before. So anybody that wants to come and get a hot dog and eat on while you're there, you're welcome to do so.
One thing, as a disaster preparedness in the Harlow Community Center, on April 26 at 6:00 P.M., Stanley Kite will be there, and also a couple of people will be there to talk about disaster in, in the community. And it's at 6:00 P.M. on April 26, the Harlow Community Center.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for making us aware of that. All right. Anything else to bring before the board of Commissioners today? Hear none? Do I have a motion?
Move.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Stand adjourned.